Good evening, welcome to Lebanon City Council, November 9th, 2022. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mayor Messer?
Here.
Mr. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Sellers?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Lammerow?
Here.
Mrs. Eggers?
Here.
Mr. Coe?
Here. Please join us for the pledge and the invocation.
Right arm, arch. Sellers, march. Forward, march. Harry, others. East, and others.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harry, others. Order, others. Forward, march.
It's power heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, a nation that's so blessed for all that we have, even seeing the moon as I drove in, just knowing that you created that just for our enjoyment. Thank you for being there, being with us through hard times and good times. We also just lift up the nation after elections, Lord. We just pray that the men and women that were chosen will be directed and guided by good choices, monitored through you, that we can lift this nation up to continue its pace and continue to where it needs to be. Thank you again, Lord, for just patience with us. Thank you for the love for us that you have. In your precious name, amen.
Consideration of council meeting minutes, October 25th. Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Done.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
We'll be seeing our work session meeting minutes from October 17th at our next session. Next, we have the Little Miami River Economic Impact Presentation tonight. Looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. My name is Chris Barnett. I'm here tonight with Hope Taft and Bill Sheeman. We're from the Little Miami Watershed Network. We are an organization that works for the preservation of the Little Miami River. And let me give you a little bit of background about the river. And I'm going to try and do this, he said up-down. There we go.
Right, side to side. There we go.
There we go. Let me give you a little bit of background on the river, and then I'll tell you a little bit more about the economic study that was done. The Little Miami River was the first state and national scenic river in the state of Ohio. It's 115 miles long. It starts just outside of Springfield and goes all the way to the Ohio River. And no, it never touches the great Miami. They actually run parallel with each other, which, for a lot of folks, is news. The Little Miami Watershed Network, there we go, is an organization that was started about 12 years ago, with Hope Taft being in the lead of that, and along with one of her neighbors. And it was started to protect the Little Miami because she found that there was a lot of things happening to degrade the river. And they chose to put together an organization to help the preservation of the river. And I'm going to go through these, but I'm not going to read them. So if you want to read those, you can do that while I'm speaking. The organization itself is a project-oriented organization. We do things like river cleanups, tributary cleanups, tree plantings, and educational programs. Four years ago, Hope and Bill had the idea of putting together an economic study of the river. And this came about because we kept getting the question, what's the river worth? Well, when you ask those of us as part of this organization what the river's worth, we're going to say it's worth a lot. We can do it, we kayak it, we fish it. It's worth a great deal to us. But that wasn't the question. Why was the dollar amount, why, and what's it worth? So with the help of Ohio State University, Professor Brent Songen, they put together a survey that was seven months long, starting in April and ending in October. And you have that complete survey in front of you. It's in that packet. The survey was 43 miles of the river. No, we did not do all 115 miles. A little cumbersome to try and do that amount. And our organization deals predominantly with the northern half of the river, from South Charleston or Springfield area, all the way down to just north of South Lebanon, Yorkonia area. So we incorporated Clark, Green, and Warren County. We had 24 volunteers that were very dedicated to this survey. Actually, they stayed with us through the whole survey, which is unusual. And it was not your typical survey. We've all been involved with surveys where people come up at the clipboard and say, can I ask you a few questions? And you skirt them as quickly as you can, because you don't want to answer them. When we went into a site, and we had 45 sites within that 43 miles, we went into a site, we would count the number of vehicles that were there so we could get an idea of the number of cars or number of folks that were visiting. And then we would leave an information sheet. And on the information sheet, there was a QR code and a website that folks could access a computer program. The computer program was made up of two different sets of questions. The first initial set of questions was about seven questions. Ask you real simple things. What's your zip code? How often do you visit the river? How long do you stay? What kind of things do you do when you're there? That if you wanted to, you could go on and take the second part of the survey and it'd ask you more in-depth questions. We made it a two-part survey so that we wouldn't have people skirting our questions, and we would get more data. We did very well. Most surveys get about an 8% return rate. We got a 17% return rate, which is huge. We found that we had 836,000 trips being made to these 45 sites along the river. Now, when I say trips, I'm not talking about individual people. I'm talking about vehicles. So that could be one person, or it could be five. So that number could be exponentially higher when you're talking about the number of people that are enjoying the northern half of this river. In the Warren County area, we estimated 96,195 trips to nine sites along the Little Miami. Now, are there any directly in Lebanon itself? Well, no. The river does not directly hit the city of Lebanon. But you are affected by this. And how are you affected by this? Well, you're affected by this because of that 96,000 sites, the trips. Folks have to come from somewhere, which means they're coming from Lebanon or coming through Lebanon to get to the river. Here's the list of sites along the river that we're studying. Now, you'll notice that not all of those sites directly are against the river itself. We chose sites that were either right on the Little Miami or were right on a bike path that would take you to the Little Miami. Either one of them has access to the river. The largest number of trips were made between May and June. And if you've ever been on the bike path, you know the Corvus Bike Path is the most visited bike path, parking area, in all of the southern end of our survey.
Why do you think that's so?
Because of its easy access.
Okay. I mean, they've got some shops and stuff there now open.
There are a few, limited, but a few. I would think additional shops would make sense, additional amenities would make sense. But it is so easily accessible.
Okay.
Now, the recreational value is $14.9 million being spent in this northern half of the river. And I'm going to let Bill explain to you what that $14.9 million means. Bill, you run up here.
Do you mind if we ask questions as we go?
Absolutely, please.
I like your recreational value is estimated. Has anyone ever done an estimation of actual return from those four? Like, the canoe, how would they make? And what does, is that?
I'm going to let him.
Okay. Because I'd be curious, there's not a lot along the rivers, but what does that generate?
Well, what a great place for me to pick up.
Yeah. Well, I did what you said, right?
Yeah, you said it exactly.
Yeah, that segue.
So, $14.9 million, that knocked our socks off. That's annually, that's an economic engine that generates that number annually. There are two major components of that number. One is called direct spending. We've studied that for decades, for 100 years. You know, when we first started looking at parks and natural features like rivers and mountains, all we could do was study how much beer, wine, potato chips, bait, and sporting goods equipment was purchased. That's an example of direct spending. But we all knew they were more valuable than just the direct spending. But we didn't know how to quantify that, how to study that. And Ohio State was one of the leaders in figuring out how to put a number on that other piece. And it's a large piece. It's even larger than the direct spending piece. In economic theory, it's known as consumer surplus. And what this is, this is the value that the users place on going to these beautiful assets, the parks, whether they're the city parks. Your Eco Park here is a wonderful example. The Little Miami River is just like that. People that go there have their own idea of what that value is. And it can be modeled. With all of these databases now and access to consumer data, how consumers spend their money, it's become relatively easy to figure out the value consumers put on parks. They have a choice when they come to the Little Miami River or to Miller Eco Park, for instance. They could go to Home Depot and purchase things to work on their house. They could go out to do a meal with their family. They could go see a movie. All of those things, we have those numbers by zip code. So we have all that economic spending averaged by zip code in databases. And Ohio State uses that to drive this consumer surplus model. If you look in your report, Table 6 in your report, it has the consumer surplus piece. The consumer surplus piece is what the public values these sites at. And in this study on the $14.9 million, the consumer surplus piece was $6.7 million annually. And the direct spending piece was $5.2 million. So it's really a breakthrough. It's been used a lot now. It's gone mainstream a few years ago when Ohio State and some other universities started using it. You know, people said, well, you know, does this make sense? And then, when we started interviewing people and crunching the numbers, it became more and more academically sound. It's a mainstream, accepted academic way of modeling the value of these natural areas. And before Chris kicks his ass there, I don't know if I answered your question, but Ohio State's done these studies for the Department of Natural Resources in Ohio. They completed a study last year for natural areas and preserves. They've done them for metro parks. So Toledo Metro Park had Ohio State do a study that looked at the value of metro parks. This study and that number doesn't, does not include real estate value. So beyond this number, we know that these natural areas, the closer you live to them, the more valuable the real estate is. You can ask your auditor to model, like, the income based on real estate value in proximity to parks and features like the Little Miami.
So is this, is that model-specific to natural amenities like this?
This model that we're talking about, this number, is specific to just the Little Miami River.
Well, the theory, is the theory that they use to get these numbers specific to this? Because we get studies where the modeling is for economic impact for this business.
So, so the model is specific to the value of natural areas like parks. It was used famously in calculating the damages that were done to the Gulf of Mexico by the Deepwater Horizon disaster. Using this methodology of modeling, they calculated almost $21 billion of damage to those ecosystems and the environment down there. And that was what the drilling companies, BP primarily and all the drilling companies, that's what they ended up settling for, $21 billion. So if you look at your population, the people you represent, we finally have a way to grasp this intangible number. I mean, look at your citizens who live in the city, who live around the city. We have a number, we can hang on that now.
So Dan could theoretically model the economic impact of our park system?
Exactly.
Using this, using this theory?
You could use this and do a micro-study. You could, if you surveyed the people using Miller Eco Park, is that in the city limits? So if you used the same thing that we did for the Little Miami and shrunk it down and had people counting cars in the parking lot and asking them for a very simple survey, the survey response was amazing. We, I don't know if you covered that, but the people just, they loved these assets so much, they responded at a very high rate. And you could shrink down exactly what we did and produce the numbers for Miller Eco Park.
That's right.
You could do it.
That'd be interesting.
So. So this is, this will be the short version tonight, but do your question. Scott, did I answer, did I get to what you wanted?
Yeah, no, I think that $5 million number was what you had said, so.
Yeah, that's the direct spending piece. It's well over $5 million, the direct spending piece. And then the consumer surplus piece is, really, 2/3 of the whole pie is consumer surplus and 1/3 is the direct spending piece. We could answer other questions, but.
I do have a follow-up question. Was it broken out by zip codes? Like, we have an idea of?
Yep. And you segwayed into the next. My first time to talk to you all. Did I do it right? And Bill just said to me, talk about how important zip codes are. Well, and zip codes are important because that's how we are able to break down, community by community, township versus, and I shouldn't say versus city, but township compared to city, what everybody's value was. And we found that Warren County, and I was able to take all the zip codes within Warren County, put them all together, and it came up with $1,176,830. That's your consumer, that's your recreational spending. Now, remember, 2/3 of that is your consumer surplus, 1/3 of that is your direct spending. So that is all just within, of that $14.9, Warren County had 1.1 of that. And if you think about it, we only did the upper portion of Warren County. So that number could be much larger, you know, if we did the rest of the community. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, you know, and I would agree with the southern part too, because of the Lovelands, you know, higher populations around the.
Correct, yeah. And that's part of the reason why, because of how much, how huge the Loveland area is, it would have made this survey so cumbersome. It would have made it difficult. So that cutoff made, was, makes sense.
I could see Loveland doing this survey themselves.
Yes.
Like, Milford probably next, but the river's so much part of the town, it goes right through it.
Absolutely.
And the bike trail.
The river and the bike path, yep.
Yeah, so I could see them, someone ever questioned, why are we spending money on the river? Well, here's why.
Here's why. And, and again, you segwayed for me. I really like you guys. So why did we do this? Well, just for that reason. And there's your totals. There's all the different communities. That's Green County, and I'm sorry it's broken down, Green County first, simply because of, there's so many of them. There was only one site in Clark County, Warren County's totals. And then we broke it down by Waynesville and then Yorkonia, so you can kind of get a feel for those numbers. And hang on to that, and let me, let me tell you one other thing before I answer that. The river itself, if we would break the river down mile by mile, you know, kind of like how ODOT breaks your roads down, what each mile of road would cost them to fix it, or what it's worth by community, 346,500 per mile for the river. Now, why did we do this? Well, we did this just because we needed to answer that question, why. We also wanted to be able to come to organizations like yourself and say, this river is important, and this river is important to your community. It may not directly run through your community, but these dollars are running through your community, and these people are running through your community. And when you are making decisions, whatever they may be, and it has an impact on the river, we'd like for you to think about that. You know, and the fact that, you know, there are a lot of folks out there that think this river is very, very important, and the dollar amount's showing that. Some of the trash. And any other questions I can?
What was that, we need your help, pardon?
Well, we need your help more than ever. There is a huge effect being placed on the river. There's a lot of impact being placed on the river right now. You know, the rain bombs that we're having because of our weather change is causing huge erosion issues. You know, we're having lots of sediment problems. You may have heard about the mussels that they're reintroducing and trying to bring back to the Little Miami because they're being wiped out from all of the sediment. There are things that you can do as both a private citizen and as a government agency to help stop that from happening. You know, encouraging folks to put in riparian right-of-ways, to create prairies along, along the river. You know, you're zoning and planning, when you are talking with your zoning and planning folks and making those decisions, think about how, you know, what's going to affect the river, particularly with our weather changes. You know, when you get all that massive water coming off, you know, our fields and our roads and our asphalt surfaces, you know, think about your, you know, impervious versus impervious. You know, what's better for the river and what will have a bigger effect? Those are the kinds of things that we encourage you all to, to think long and hard about your decisions because you have the opportunity to make those, you know, and make positive effects.
During the survey, did you have a, any sort of a look at the amount of private? How much of the short lines privatized versus, I mean, because there's a lot of private homes and then just vacant land and no idea if it's private, you know?
The survey did not do that, but we have done parts of that. Within Green County, we have a running map that shows us what's private, what's public. And it's running about 50/50 right now within the Green County area. What it is down here, I'm sorry, I don't know. I can't answer that one for you.
Thank you.
So it wouldn't be tough to look it up, though? We could find that if you're looking for it.
I've got a couple of questions for you. So for somebody that lives along the river, and they would say, okay, what kind of things can we do to be helpful? Where would be a place that we can point them to specific information?
Our website.
Okay. Is that in this packet?
That is in that packet. That can help them with that. They can contact us through that.
Okay.
And then places like your Soil and Water Conservation District would be another spot.
Okay. Got another question for you.
Sure.
So I'm just trying to, I was trying to listen to you, so I wasn't reading through here.
No, you're fine.
So when you have the number value per visitor, how is that determined? Does, when they do the survey, did they say, hey, I would have paid this much to come here? Kind of thing? Or how do you figure out that, how does that number get determined?
Bill, you want to tell you to answer that one for me? He's my numbers guy. I don't do numbers well, as you can see.
So going back to zip code, I hope I heard your question right. But going back to zip code, it's part of the public record now what the average household income is for every zip code. So once we know, we get a response from the people who answered the survey, and one of the things we ask them for is their zip code, we know, not by each individual trip, but we know on average what the average household income is for that zip code. And then, average household income can be broken down into what's known as different spending accounts. So it all is driven by zip code. If you have average household incomes, with higher average household incomes, this consumer surplus piece is more valuable. But the, the average household incomes in this end of the watershed were surprisingly similar. And you'll see that in that table. So if you look in the table and you look at that, you'll see a lot of $12 figures up and down that table. So there isn't a lot of, pardon? But there isn't, there isn't a huge spread. It's not like we have one or two Beverly Hills and then one or two the other end of the scale. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm trying to, so I guess I'm just trying to figure out how that value, that specific, like, for example, you know, Zone 1, Beatty Station, it says, okay, value per visitor, $11.77. What does that number mean?
Okay, so that number is the amount of time people spend on there. So we had different trips, different times. Some people go and spend an hour, some people go and spend two hours, three hours. And then on the, it's like an X-Y axis. The time is on one side, and down the other axis are the number of people. And what you end up with is a diagram of people and time. And you average all those together, the total number of trips for that site, divided by the total amount of time, and that's what drives that number.
Okay.
So it's, it's like a scatter diagram, but it can actually be graphed.
Okay.
And that's what they did. So it was surprising, again, it surprised me. At first, I thought, well, you know, Ohio State crunched all these numbers. They use calculus, they've got formulas, you know, measured in inches long. But surprisingly consistent numbers, really, when you look at all these trips that are made there. And just because I'm an ex-zoning official in a township, and I worked on land use planning and riparian buffer zoning and protecting like the Little Miami and the tributaries of the watershed, you ask what you can do, that's, that's the number one most important thing, is try to get those buffers established, be thinking about how quick the water runs into the river. The river's flashier than ever these days. We get a big rainstorm, it comes up really fast, it erodes the banks. It has major environmental impact. So, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Taft, a long time ago, I was an anonymous lawyer working in the city solicitor's office in Cincinnati. And I remember all of your, now, an equally anonymous old lawyer, but I remember all of your work on behalf of various volunteer organizations. I think CASA, wasn't it, that you were involved with? And I don't know how much the council is familiar, but I just wanted to thank you for all of your work and your energy on everything that you've worked on. for all of your work and your energy on everything that you've worked on over the years. And, um, I'm, I'm heartened to realize that you're interested in the river. I think it's, the river's in good hands, if you have anything to do with it, so.
Thank you, thank you. I think you all might find it interesting that, and those zip codes, they came from forty-three different counties in Ohio. So some people would come from Warren, Ohio, to visit the upper part of the Little Miami River. So that's a big, big spread. It's not just people from a hundred miles of the river, it's people from along, because it's Ohio. They really love this part of, of the state, and we're trying really hard.
That's not the law, right?
We're trying really hard to keep it that way. In fact, one of the things that, that the Little Miami Watershed Network is doing is trying to get people to the river and to the corridor so they can understand it and so that they can start to love it and want to protect it. And on November the seventeenth, we're having a walk from Portland to Oregonia along the bike path, and are going to be telling the history of the places and, uh, really kind of educating them on why the river is low this time of year, and what they can do and what you can do to protect it, which is, as you've heard, plant trees and plant, and don't let people build right up to the, the bank, and protect those floodplain areas. It's really important that water have a chance to be water and not to be, tried to be controlled by humans, never mind.
Well, I wasn't high enough on the food chain to actually know you back then, but I, I, I knew you by reputation, and it was always very good, so.
You know me, I was like, have an interest.
That's right.
And when I, when we moved to Green County and got a wonderful house right on the Little Miami River, when I started seeing little cartwheels and trash of all kinds plugged down the river, I knew I had to do something. This is what I knew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, you segwayed what I was going to say. I, I feel, uh, I have two questions. I have a financial question and then, and then, uh, just some stuff I thought. My belief is that the more, because I love history, it's, it's just my passion, and the more people are aware of the history of something, is when I, I mean, I can go over to our museum and I spend a large amount of time on the, the Little Miami River section, the ice houses that were there, the bridge works, Oregonia Bridge Works, the different companies that ran and operated. I've been to the Butter, Butter, Butterworth Farm, where they would ship their materials down to Cincinnati, the train went right in front of them, you know, that two-hundred-year-old rock house farm is beautiful. I think when people know more about it, that that makes them, I get it now, it's not just a tub of water that you raft on every once in a while. So I think what you're doing, the walk, is a good, that's, that's what I would recommend.
Come join us.
Yeah, well, I wrote it down. I might need to be pushed apart away. There we go. Yeah, thank you. But I think the more people, I know when I become aware of something and the value and the history and bringing it back to the roots, it makes me more interested in it, and I always have to have a passion to it. I, the, the observatory at Hyze Park, I built that, um, and now I'm crazy about stars. My neighbor is the one who built the telescope, um, Jeff Blazy, and, um, he's a rocket scientist for real, you know? And, you know, every, like I mentioned the moon in my prayer, I'm very aware of planets and things, just because of his interest fed into me. And I think everyone in Lebanon that's lived here at any part of the time has a story about the Little Miami, and, and I've got some funny ones, and some legal, some not.
Please share. We did an oral history of the river, uh, last, uh, two years ago, and we now have a, a program that we can give to any group called The River Speaks, that talks about that people's history and love of the river.
Well, and people don't know that the train was the bike trail, they don't know the, the community that was right there, so it makes it fascinating, especially for kids. And my other question, and I don't mean this to be silly, but like financially, who owns the river? So when something is needed, is the, the township chunk that it runs through pays for it, or? I have a, I have Turtle Creek runs through my backyard, and literally through my backyard, and my property goes right to it, uh, and then over it, when you look at the auditor site, I don't own Turtle Creek, that section of, that runs through my backyard. But if there was, let's say, a calamity and an issue, and we had to reinforce a, a bank, who, who? I know a lot of volunteer work goes in it, I know a lot of that, but who owns that? Where does the, any money come from, or where does it go?
Uh, that's a very good question. I'm always working with the Department of Natural Resources to get help. But technically, uh, you own to the middle of the river, or the water. I mean, I, we live on one side of the, of the river, and so we own to the middle of the river. If you're a canoeer or a paddler, you can be on the water and you're not trespassing anybody's property, but if you get on the bank, then you're, then you are trespassing. And, uh, this high water is a very big personal issue with me, because we live on a bend of the river, and, um, the, we have about two-hundred-year-old zycodra tree that's pretty close to the bank, and when we moved in, it was about, uh, six feet from the river. Now it's about five feet from the river, uh, so it's getting closer all the time, and I can see that my bank is becoming a sandbar across on the other side of the, the, the bend of the river, because that's what's happening, is the river is eating away at my, like, bank on our side of the river and, and taking it across the river and dumping it in.
But as far as cleanliness and things that, I know we went, uh, did a tour of our water treatment plant, and it was fascinating to see what came in and how it came out.
And that's very important this time of year.
And how often it's tested, I was, it was amazing in that. I just, if, if, if there was an issue, who, and it's not, they're not going to come knocking on your door and say, you, we need to have a dredger come down, I mean, who does that?
Um, the, because it's a national, a state and national scenic river, but particularly because it's a national scenic river, the, uh, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers really controls all of the activity that happens in or on the river, and they have a, a ton of regulations that you have to go through. I'm in that process right now. So they, they.
So there is an overseer. I know, like, the trash roundups and things like that, a lot of that's volunteers.
That's all volunteers.
And I've done those.
Yeah, that's all.
So it is an amazingly clean river. I know that picture wasn't good-looking, but when we did our trash roundup, it was amazing how little, now they've instituted some policies on beer drinking and whatever, that's ninety percent of the trash is cans, but, um, and, but yeah, it's, it's a.
We have seen the, over the ten years that we've done it, we've seen the river get a lot cleaner.
A lot better.
We've taken out, uh, uh, over a thousand tires in three counties. So there's still trash there, but it's a lot cleaner than it was. We now do, um, what we call stream quality monitoring, which is an SQM process that the state recommends and has verified, to test the, the water quality. You can see a lot of the junk, but there's a lot of pollution you can't see, and so we want to make sure the water is clean. And in this time of year, when the groundwater is low and is not filling up the river so much, most of the water in the river is from your wastewater treatment plants. So it's very important that you watch those and make sure that they're, uh, testing the water and, and.
Well, I know Lebanon does, I saw it happen. Stand beside Lebanon.
We're a gold standard. We've made all the new council members take a glass from the.
That forces us to drink up. That's our initiative.
It wasn't too large, though, the Little Miami was one of the, um, nine most dirty rivers in the, in the United States, but that got the wastewater.
Was that chemical dirty or trash dirty?
Chemical dirty. Uh, but that got the wastewater treatment plants motivated, and they've all cleaned up on our rivers. And now there's about eleven, thirteen of them, I think, that are doing a pretty good job of making sure they're.
Well, that's interesting you know that number. So thirteen, just in the portion or along, all the way until it dumps into Ohio? Interesting.
Well, we appreciate you. We appreciate all your work.
We appreciate you.
Thank you for coming and, and showing us.
This is the most engaged group we've been in for a while.
We've been doing this for months.
Welcome to our house.
We love our parks here and our bike trails, and just, we have pretty big development, Parkside, that, uh, is part of the green space, is a tributary, and so just you mentioning that, it's like, because I was sitting here thinking, how do we really have that impact? The tributaries, we do, we really do, yeah. So thank you for that.
Millar County Park is a gem. I, I've been involved with it since the planning process, and I've worked with more county parks and lots of volunteers. It, what a gift, that family.
Yeah.
And, and, and we know some of the family members, so.
What's in the Hyze Park?
That's the neatest park that no one knows about.
Exactly.
It is such a cool park.
No, wait, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. That was one of my surveys.
Oh, really?
There were awful lot of people in that.
Really? Well, that's good, because every time I go, it's empty. That's why we go there.
And people love that.
Has the best dog park, yes. And up the hill, the observatory that you can see now, it's fantastic.
Two years ago, we had what we call the Trail Laser Adventure Head Quarter in Hyze Park, and some people traveled up and walked and paddled down to the, to the.
And that's a wetland. I mean, yeah.
And these numbers are conservative numbers. If we went to Hyze or to Bowman and there were soccer games going on there, we didn't count. Okay, so these are very conservative numbers. We were careful every time we went out, that we were doing our best to only count people using the river corridor.
So you have a wonderful asset here, you did care of it.
Absolutely.
There's all the current places, and people love them, and, uh, they are depending on you to, and they have them to take care of and make sure that what you do has a positive impact on the city.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you.
While you're setting up for this. Oh, yeah, you're fine. We have Gage Chapp, or Gage Brown with us tonight. He just, this is his second week out of Marine Corps.
Yeah.
So he'll, he's, uh, checking out Lebanon Council, and this is a perfect night for you to get, uh, blown away by these amazing PowerPoint slides. So thanks for joining us.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Okay.
So moving on to, uh, previous business, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one five.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one five, authorizing a petition for annexation of fifty-one point four four one nine acres located off Hart Road, which is owned by the city and part of the Miller Ecological Park property.
This ordinance authorizes a petition for annexation of fifty-one point four four one nine acres of city-owned property located off of Hart Road, uh, which has already been incorporated into Miller Ecological Park.
Can you get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments? Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Norris.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one six.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one six, authorizing a petition for annexation of fifty-four point three five seven six acres located off Turtle Creek Union Road, which is owned by the city and is part of the city's bike park property. This property was previously purchased through a state green space preservation grant.
This ordinance authorizes a petition for annexation of fifty-four, fifty-four point three five acres of city-owned property located off Turtle Creek Union Road, which is already incorporated into the city's bike park. Uh, as Mark said, the property is previously purchased through a grant.
Can you get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Mr. Lammerow.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Norris.
Yes. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one eight.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one one eight, amending section nine one one point zero two, the codified ordinances providing for water use charges.
This ordinance approves amendment to adjust the water consumption rates by, by a two percent increase, which will be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three, to ensure the sustainability of the water distribution system and compliance with the enterprise bond covenants as recommended by the two thousand and twenty-one water and sewer rate study.
Can you get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Glad to be able to, uh, I'm, you know, this kind of, uh, as much as I hate fees and, and taxes, uh, this kind of a fee helps to address and maintain the exact things we were just talking about with our sewer, uh, you know, plant and, uh, clean operations of that.
Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Norris.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one nine.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one nine, amending section nine thirteen point zero three of the codified ordinances relating to sanitary sewer use charges.
This ordinance approves an amendment to adjust the sanitary sewer consumption rates by a two percent increase effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three, to ensure the sustainability of the sanitary sewer collection and treatment system as recommended by the two thousand and twenty-one water and sewer rate study.
Can you get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow.
Yes.
Mr. Norris.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one two zero.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one two zero, amending chapter one thirty-three, the codified ordinances providing for employment provisions.
This ordinance approves an update to section one thirty-three point zero two of the employment provisions of the codified ordinances to reflect a position grade change for the building maintenance supervisor from a grade four to a grade five, to ensure consistency among supervisory positions within the Public Works Department.
Can you get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Norris.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one two one.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one two one, modifying chapter seven twenty-nine, video service provider fee of the codified ordinances.
This ordinance approves modifying the video service provider fee from three percent to five percent to support the transition of the city's Channel Six public programming to ICRC, which is consistent with the city's existing franchise fee agreements with cable operators and is authorized by Ohio Revise Code, chapter thirteen thirty-two point three two.
Can you get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Mr. Lammerow.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Norris.
Yes. New business, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one two.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one two two, approving the city of Lebanon twenty twenty-three operating budget. Your honor, I believe this is on for a first reading.
Yes, sir.
And I do have a few slides for the public, kind of a condensed version of what City Council has already seen over the last month. But just to kind of walk through the budget calendar, so we're here at the first reading of the legislation. The budget was originally presented at a council work session back on October 4, and over the course of the last month, there's been discussions about the proposed budget for our first reading tonight, and then it'll be voted on next week at the regular meeting. Obviously, we go into the process with several key goals with regards to the budget, making sure that all the essential governmental services are properly resourced and that they are aligned with Council's 2023 goals and objectives. We take a hard look at sustaining adequate cash reserves, primarily in the general fund, capital improvement fund, and our geo-bond fund, which are outlined in the city's fiscal policy. But obviously, we also look at our enterprise utility funds to ensure that we're maintaining adequate cash reserves. I would say this budget definitely focuses on our road improvement program and our public safety enhancement, and we'll kind of get into that a little bit later. We continue to look to maximize the amount of resources being directed towards the city's annual road improvement program, and the major capital projects, infrastructure projects identified in our capital improvement plan have been included in the budget, including the urban paving program, which is the first phase over the next three years, our annual resurfacing program, reconstruction of Cherry Street, electric system upgrades, and replacing the Pleasant Park Playground. So just to kind of give a high-level overview, total revenues in the, in the budget are 107.78 million. Total expenditures are a little over $122 million based on full execution of the budget. Obviously, I want to get into the key factors on why the expenditures exceed the revenues. It is almost entirely driven by the fact that we have some significant electric system capital improvements that have been incorporated into the budget, and we are utilizing $14 million of existing cash reserves within the electric fund to support the generation and substation replacement project. So the city's been saving over the last few years for these planned projects, and we're now moving into the execution phase of it. So that's the reasoning behind the gap between expenditure and revenues. I always like to kind of take a look at where the city's income tax rate compares to our surrounding communities. The income tax rate is very important for the city. That's what funds your general, kind of your general services, police, roads, parks. All of that is 100% funded out of the income tax that we collect. You can see we're kind of down there at the bottom in terms of what our rate is at 1%. Quite a few of our peer communities are up in that 2% or higher range. So focusing on the 2023 road improvement program, you can see that we have a total spend just on roadway-related infrastructure of $10.5 million. So that is the, the highest amount being directed towards our road program that the city's really ever invested. There's some major projects that are, that are going to be undertaken, North Cherry Street reconstruction. When you look at the roadway and the utility replacement costs for that, it's approaching $3 million. Our resurfacing program is over $3 million. That's various roads located throughout the community. And then, as I said, the ODOT Urban Paving Program Phase 1, which is really all of State Route 63, portions of State Route 48, and portions of US 42, that program alone is over $5 million. So some significant projects will be executed next year when it comes to our roads. To accomplish that, we are directing an additional $750,000 into the capital improvement fund from the general fund to support this level of effort. Just to kind of give you an idea of where this compares to some historical numbers, you can see back in the 2015 to 2017 timeframe, the city was spending about $3.3, $3.2 million a year on our roads. From 2018 to 2022, that number grew to over $5 million on average. That's a direct reflection of the income tax credit reduction that was executed with all of that money being directed into our road improvement program. So you can see that was a significant bump over the last few years in terms of road investment. And then you can see where 2023 stacks up, just north of $10 million. There are some miscellaneous projects I wanted to highlight that are included in the budget. It does include the replacement of the Pleasant Park Playground. Based on our annual safety inspections of that playground equipment, it is in need of replacement. We, the city did receive a $1.4 million state grant to construct a bike trail through Parkside. So that project's under design right now and will be bid out early 2023. We did establish a public safety reserve and replacement fund and are putting $100,000 into that fund with the intent of really kind of saving money every year for future police facility needs. One of the goals of council was to establish a facade improvement kind of grant program to assist with buildings that need help, kind of with an uplift on the exterior. So we did put some money into that program. We are looking at upgrading our gateway signage, at least beginning that process, and then, as I said, significant investment in upgrades with our electric generation and substation. With all of this, we have included and for the most part secured almost $7 million in grant support. In terms of use of the ARPA funds that the city has received, we're showing $100,000 of ARPA funds being used to support the Pleasant Park Playground, $100,000 supporting fire department staffing needs, a little over $180,000 to support some of the sewer improvement projects, primarily at our wastewater treatment plant. And then we are looking at making, potentially making an investment with the newly created Lebanon Civic Fund for community mental health initiatives. That's kind of to be determined. So focusing on the general revenue, so these, these are the funds that are supported primarily through the income tax. The general fund, which again is police, a lot of the kind of core governmental services, the budget calls for revenues of $18.9 million and expenses at $18.79 million based on a 98% execution rate on the expense side. So it is balanced. The geo-bond fund, which really serves the debt obligations for the city, you can see the revenues exceed expenses by quite a bit. That's a reflection of really the city's low debt load, and that's been a focus of council over the last few years, is to pay off existing debt where possible. And you can see the benefit of that, obviously, going cash flow positive in the geo-bond fund. And then the capital improvement fund, which is again primarily the road improvement program, revenues of 11.02 million, expenses at 11.05 million. So essentially balanced. Did want to highlight some proposed staffing changes that are included in the budget. We are looking at converting nine existing part-time firefighter positions to full-time positions. This is dependent, or at least the financial model is based on the city securing a safer grant for six of those positions. But then we also have included three new full-time firefighter positions that are non-safear grant dependent. So again, kind of continuing down that path of looking to transition our fire and EMS operation to more of a full-time versus part-time staffing model.
That's a cool question. Regarding the safer grant, do we have a timeline? I know we've talked about that in the past.
Yeah.
When that's gonna...
Actually, yeah. So they have begun awarding the grant to some communities. I emailed them Monday, actually, and I got a response the next day, which is great, kind of understanding where they're at. So there's still about $200 million that has not, and grants that have not been distributed at this point. The information, and I'll forward the email to council, the information they provided is that they would be, they would continue to be making awards in November through December, and then that should kind of be it. So I would anticipate, based on that, knowing whether or not we got the grant by the end of the year.
If, for whatever reason, if we were to miss that grant, is, is there, will there be another offering in, in 12 months or 24 months?
Yeah, it's an annual program, so there would be another grant cycle. I think it generally, grant applications are due in kind of that February, March. So it is an annual program, so there would be another cycle that could be pursued. Yeah, but we're keeping our fingers crossed on this one. But we should know something within the next month or so.
Scott, can I ask you a follow-up to that?
Sure.
So the safer grant, is it only for new positions, or could it be used for existing?
No, it has to be for new. Yeah, you can't kind of pre-hire and then, yeah, you've got to kind of...
Okay.
Hire these employees as part of the safer grant award.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it has to be additive.
Okay.
Do they ask for, I was involved in a grant one time where you had to come up with your sustainability after the grant ran out. Does Safer ask that?
Well, I mean, they tell you that, I mean, you have to, it's a three-year, it's a three-year grant, so you're getting funding over the course of three years to support the positions. But after that, the community has to fund those positions.
But they don't ask, like, what is your plan?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't recall that specifically. It's just obviously very clear that those positions have to be supported, you know, moving forward after the grant expires. We did include in the budget, the budget does include a new patrol officer, which will be assigned as a school resource officer. So that is in the budget. Additional municipal service worker in our public works department has been included, just, you know, for general streets, parks, no response, kind of that type of maintenance. And we have a part-time custodian position that we're proposing to convert to full-time. It does include removing the telecom position due to Joe's retirement and transitioning that to the ICRC contract. Staff wages and health insurance, so the budget includes a 2% cost of living and a 1.5% performance wage increase and kind of at one time, $250 payment in January, just due to the fact that, you know, with the inflation and other pressures this year, the staff wage increases were well below that amount. In terms of health insurance, the city's health insurance plan continues to perform well. It's projected to actually decrease next year by our health insurance broker. But we did add a health savings account or a high deductible plan option into what we offer to our, to our employees to, again, try to build that consumerism into our health insurance program. We talk about cash reserves, so this is kind of showing you where we're managing to. So this is both the historical and then the future general fund cash reserve projections. You can see that dip there, kind of in 2022, that is a result of using some of our cash reserves to pay off debt. So moving forward then, 2023, and, you know, kind of that flat line there, we're kind of in that five-month operating reserve level of, you know, somewhere between seven and a half, eight million dollars. Geo-bond fund cash reserves, again, kind of same story. You see the dip this year. That is again due to the fact that we use cash reserves to pay off debt, and then you kind of see those cash reserve balances grow starting next year. And then the capital improvement fund cash reserves, it's all over the map. Those kind of wild swings are due to kind of grant timing. So a lot of our major road projects are supported by grants. So these are kind of the end-of-year cash reserve balances. Sometimes we've got reimbursed from the grants, sometimes we haven't. But if you kind of trend that out, we are typically in that 1.5 to $2 million cash reserve level for our capital improvement fund. Rate changes, so council tonight had the water and the sewer 2% rate increase on the agenda. Essentially, there are no other utility rate increases being proposed or incorporated into the operating budget. We always like to just make sure that, again, the, the operating budget is aligned with the goals that City Council established earlier this year. In terms of growing our cash reserves, both the general fund and capital improvement fund cash reserves are stable. The geo-bond fund is actually growing, so we've maintained that five-month operating reserve. Our fiscal policy calls for a maximum of six months' reserve, so we're in line with the fiscal policy. Almost $7 million in grants have either been secured or are being pursued. They've been applied for. That's been incorporated into the budget. All of the capital improvement plan projects that were identified in our five-year plan have been included. Enhancing public safety, again, nine new full-time firefighter EMS positions have been included, and then one additional police position are in the budget. We continue to kind of put some money aside for possible property acquisition redevelopment efforts. We continue to allocate money for a small business incentive grant program, which has been very successful. A lot of the improvements and efforts to launch new small businesses, especially in our downtown, have utilized this incentive program. And then in terms of quality of life, replacing the Pleasant Park Playground, the Parkside Bike Trail, all of that has been included in the budget. $10.5 million are being invested in our roadway program, which is a historically high investment. And again, we're able to do that by taking some general fund income tax dollars, additional $750,000 of that, and putting it into our capital improvement fund. And then we also redirected 2% of our income tax revenue from our geo-bond fund into the capital improvement fund to support that $10.5 million effort, and we're able to do that because of the city's low debt obligations.
Can I get a motion for a first read? Any comments over the presentation?
Another great year in Lebanon.
Ordinance number 2022-123.
Ordinance number 2022-123 approving inter-fund transfers contained in the proposed 2023 operating budget. Again, your Honor, this is on for first reading.
This legislation will approve the inter-fund transfers that are incorporated into the 2023 operating budget.
Can I get a motion, first read?
So moved.
Second. Any comments here? Ordinance number 2022-124.
Ordinance number 2022-124 approving the final plat for Norgal Industrial Park Section 3 as recommended by Planning Commission and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the final plat for Norgal Industrial Park Section 3, which consolidates lots to allow for the continuation of the existing RV self-storage facility.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments here? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes. Ordinance number 2022-125.
Ordinance number 2022-125 approving a right-of-way dedication plat for .9015 acres along the frontage of Mason-Moral Mill Grove Road as recommended by Planning Commission and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the right-of-way dedication plat for .9015 acres along the frontage of Mason-Moral Mill Grove Road, which will allow for future public infrastructure improvements dedicated towards roadway safety.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes. Ordinance number 2022-126.
Ordinance number 2022-126 approving the final plat for Summerlin Farms as recommended by Planning Commission and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the final plat for Summerlin Farms, which creates 44 new lots with access off of New Armstrong Way.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments here? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-127.
Ordinance number 2022-127 approving a contract with Eagle Bridge Company in the amount of $1,901,480 for the replacement of Railroad Bridge 4.10 to support continued operations of the LMNM Excursion Rail per the existing rail usage agreement and declaring an emergency.
This contract, or ordinance approves a contract with Eagle Bridge Company in the amount of $1,901,480 for the removal and replacement of Railroad Bridge 4.10, which is being partially supported by a $750,000 state capital budget grant and $750,000 in county and city ARPA funds. I think at the meeting last week, a council member had asked if we had worked with this company before, which we haven't, but they are the company that is doing the Turtle Creek Union Road bypass 48, overpass project right now.
Oh, very good.
Found that out the other day, so, yeah.
Yeah. You did a good job there.
Yep.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any comments here?
Excited to have the bridge done.
This is important. This is a big deal. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Ordinance number 2022-128.
Ordinance number 2022-128 approving the purchase of a 2024 Model Western Star 47X tandem rear axle cabin chassis.
That's what I'm talking about.
As part of the Ohio Department of Transportation co-op purchasing program for a total of
I love how your accent changed when you were reading that. That was pretty good.
Well...
This ordinance approves the... This ordinance approves the purchase of a 2024 Western Star truck, as Mark describes it. It will replace one of our existing 2006 dump trucks that has reached the end of its useful service life.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
I would love to say, say yeah.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Oh, I did, okay. I didn't understand what you said. Any comments on this? More than we've already said. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes. Ordinance number 2022-129.
Resolution number 20...
Oh, sorry. Didn't even read it right.
It's okay.
Resolution...
Resolution number 2022-129, authorizing a memory and... Resolution number 2022-129 authorizing a memory innovative understanding with the Lebanon School District to provide an additional school resource officer to bring the total to two school resource officers.
This resolution authorizes an MOU with the Lebanon School District to increase the number of school resource officers in the schools to two officers, and this has been included in our operating budget.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Can it be noted that the city is pays for half the salary, just so people know that?
Yeah, that, yeah. So we pay, the, the city and the school district split the cost 50/50 for nine months of the officer's salary. And then, you know, during the summer months, he resumes kind of that normal patrol officer.
Quick question to follow up on that. So when it comes, I was thinking about this as I was reading it the other day. So that man or woman, our SRO officer, say that real fast, who, how do we handle their pension and their benefits and that sort of thing? Because I know there's two separate pension plans.
Yeah.
I mean, are we messing up their time of service?
No, so we're, we're paying them. They're an employee of the city. We bill the school district.
Perfect.
For their share of the cost and they pay us, yeah.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Lamero?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-130.
Ordnance number 2022-130 authorizing the city manager to execute a change order for additional street resurfacing in the Lebanon Cemetery as part of the 2022 street resurfacing program utilizing existing funding available in the 2022 operating budget and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance authorizes a change order for additional street resurfacing in the Lebanon Cemetery utilizing existing funds in the 2022 operating budget, which would be completed by the contractor in the spring of 2023. The change order amount is $150,000. The funding's available because we had a project earlier this year come in significantly under budget.
Very good. Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any comments?
Yeah, question. The, are we locked in with pricing or is there escalation clause in there because it's so uncertain?
Yeah, so the, yeah, we're locked into pricing. What we, the way it's set up with the change order is it's the unit pricing that they submitted in their contract this year with a 3% inflationary factor applied for next year.
Yeah, and this is, this is really needed. I didn't realize how much it was needed until I saw the pictures and went down there and drove around as well, so this is going to be really good.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamero?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-131.
Ordnance number 2022-131 amending chapter 152 of the codified ordinances providing for income tax.
This ordinance authorizes the 2023 income tax allocation percentages of 54% to the general fund, 41% to the capital improvement fund, and 5% to the general obligation bond fund, which will be effective January 1st, 2023. An additional 2% or 2%, 2% of the income tax revenue is being directed from the geo bond fund to the capital improvement fund to support next year's road improvement program as presented.
First read. Can I get a motion for a first read?
So moved.
Any questions or comments about that?
I think it'd be important, Scott, to maybe comment on what that 2% redirection is because of the one chart that showed us that healthy reserves.
Yeah, yeah, so 2% equates to about, about 125,000, I think, per percentage. So 2% would be roughly, yeah, roughly $250,000 is being directed from the geo bond fund, which even after that redirection of the money, the geo bond fund is financially strong. So we want to put that money to work fixing our roads.
It, because I think it's, right, so it's important that residents understand paying down debt puts us in that good position, the stewardship, good stewardship of, of city staff and managing that helps us to be able to redirect. We don't need to put money aside to, as a debt reserve to pay for debt because the fund's healthy, low debt, we can redirect that and put that money to work.
Discussion items. City manager's report.
Yeah, the next meeting of city council is a voting meeting next Tuesday, November 15th, and that will be the last meeting of city council in November. And just a reminder that city offices will be closed this Friday in observance of Beckham Day.
Very good. Mr. Sellers, you got anything for us?
Yeah, I thought it was really interesting, learning more on the Little Miami River. And I'm a big statistic guy. Got a lot to scan over there, but that'll be, that'll be pretty interesting. Also, this is the part that I like about going first sometimes, I'd like to congratulate, you know, our new state representative, Adam. So expecting all the problems to be solved there in Columbus now. No, but being a, being an American traditionalist, these are the victories I get excited about. It's the important victories. You know, representatives with the character that you have are, you know, exactly what this founding generation had in mind when they established this federal republic. So I'll be, I'll, I love every minute of you being up there reciting the Constitution as ratified. So, but you know, we've talked about it before, you know, Warren County has, you know, a large impact on the state and the state has a large impact on the country. So it's not only a great win for us here in this community, but it's a, it's a great win for the state and for the country, so congratulations.
Mr. Lamero?
I'd like to.
Unless you need to have a Thomas Jefferson quote for us.
Oh, sorry, hold on.
I'd like to echo those comments as well. Congratulations. If I'm not mistaken, you're the first representative from Lebanon that we've had in years, like decades.
Ever, I think.
Maybe ever.
If you count Corwin Nixon, he's from Red Lion.
Yeah. So congratulations. Also, I'd like to congratulate State Representative Lips and State Senator Wilson on their reelection and Commissioner Grossman. I know what it's like to, to run a countywide race and organize volunteers and knock doors and put signs up, and it's, it's very, it's, it's a, it's a big undertaking, so congratulations. I worked for the, with the board of elections yesterday and, and was around three or four different polling stations and, you know, I'm just really proud of Warren County, the really no major issues. We had tons of volunteers, both Republicans and Democrats, and things went real smooth. And I get, I always get frustrated when you watch the news and you see all these other states that can't do math, that just defies logic, but that's a whole nother conversation. Wanted to really say a good, a great thanks to staff and, and previous councils for keeping our budget responsible, trying to keep our standard of living low. Really appreciate the, the effort that you guys put in in chasing grants. Seven million dollars is a ton of money and it's just, it's, it's, it's great. So I appreciate that, appreciate the low debt load that we have and the fiscal responsibility. So, and then the last thing I just had was a question. I had a neighbor ask me this week, what's the leaf pickup schedule look like? Will there be another round? I've seen the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's on the website. They, they, you know, have weeks and they have the scheduling around. So I would say, yeah, definitely pull the map up on the website, or if you have specific questions, then contact the service department. But they're, they'll be, they'll be out there in the.
Awesome, thank you.
There's an infographic like right on the front, the front page of their.
I told him the mayor would be out to get it.
Yep, I'm there.
He's gonna try. Sorry. I got my leaf shiver on my jaw near. That's all I got.
Mr. Norris, how was the report today?
It's coming. I, I, when Councilman Matt talks, I always envision a flag and a star spangled banner. You can fire me up with some waving symbol. So thank you for your, I, I do appreciate you bringing that home. I really do. It's, we forget that and that, that your, your passion for the constitution and for the, the country and it is great, pretty nice one, thank you for that. Just a, I was going to say something about leaves too. Where I live, I'm right across the street from the mansions and those guys have like two acre front yards with lots of trees. And of course, we get 75% of their leaves in our yard, so it's a nice reminder, but I was, these guys have been up there, they blow their leaves down the hillside and then they'll, there's mountains that, that, that they have and they'll sometimes pile them on the sidewalks, which is very difficult because Cincinnati Avenue has a very public sidewalk there. People walk their dogs by grade and it's always hard, those leaves sitting there. So this year, they left them up on top of the hill, like right where the drops off to the sidewalk. And I, I watched a Lebanon city worker, and I don't know who it was. I want, I didn't have time, I wanted to run over and just thank him. He blew all those leaves for those people across that whole strip of those, those large mansions down to the, down to the curb. So the guys come back, the guys came and, and then sucked them up, but he did that for the residents. And I just thought only in Lebanon are we taking care. I mean, in other communities, they say, we're not getting those because the sucker on the truck doesn't go up far enough. But I just thought it's just a, it was just a great scene of, of someone doing something extra. And there's a lot of leaves, a lot of leaves. And I too want to thank the staff, being on council now almost a year, and just seeing the work that goes in. And, and again, I comment on all time, but the hubbub around town between bike trails being built and new restaurants and, and really cool apartments that I don't know if every community has the, the luxury of a balanced budget and money left over, we can move it into really cool things. And I think sometimes we get caught up in the complaining and the grumbling that a couple of people do, but when you just go outside, drive the streets or take a walk, there's so much that Lebanon has to offer and, and it even stretches. I always considered the Little Miami River part of Lebanon. That was just, it's there, it's something that I went to all the time as a kid. And, and seeing the passion of these folks that came for volunteers inspires me to know there's more to do out there. These things run on help, but it's just a network of really cool things that, that's available for us. But I, I just again, want to thank our staff for working so hard to make those, the parks and the trails and the, and the other stuff possible beyond you just keeping the city running in a, in a good manner.
We have outstanding staff.
Yeah, you guys are top notch, so thank you. And congratulations. I saw Adam at the debate and I honestly, if I had gone in there not wanting, knowing him or not wanting to vote for him, I honestly say I would have voted for you. You are an absolute man of integrity. You were, you were honest, you were polite and courteous, sharp, you knew your stuff, you were, you were researched and I, I just really was impressed and it was an honor to vote for you.
You're next, Ed. Well. Unless you were here for the class. No, it's fine. I want to say, oh, I have my normal city things. The catch fire grand opening was awesome. It was great seeing so many people there. And then we got to go back last night for the victory party, so that was a lot of fun. We have, Team Saifon Maine is having their Find the Good fundraiser. Registration closes tomorrow at noon, so that all helps Saifon Maine here in town. And Veterans Day, there's a Veterans Day program at the YMCA at noon on Friday, right there in their things. I do want to say thank you, thank you so much for the kind words. Thanks to you for the support. Thank you for your encouragement, moving signs, working in polling locations, doing sanity checks as we talk through all this and really being a large part of the success because you've helped build the great city of Lebanon and been good stewards of that, to share the story of how our policies help people. And couldn't have done that without you. It's your successes that we are taking to Columbus. So thank you so much for being a very large part of that and making that story easier to tell. So thank you.
Making Columbus Lebanon again. You're up, Mike.
Congratulations. It was an honor to vote for you, honored to help and do whatever little part to, to make sure that some of your integrity, that can go and represent the, all the people in the district that you represent and in particular, people of Lebanon. So we are blessed to have a team that works, disagrees, works through differences to come up with good policies for the city. And you've been a large part of that. As I said, I don't know, there hasn't been anybody else on council that I've seen work hard putting legislative language together for ordinances and they'll be sorted out, so that is your forte. You'll be able to go there and hopefully help bring sanity to, to those that are in Columbus spending our money in wacky ways and good ways. More grants. The budget is, is a, is a big undertaking. Thank you to staff, the way you guys do it and you get it to us, you explain it, you're diligent in answering our questions. And so the city residents need to understand that, you know, this is a long process, has been, I was surprised it was October, I was thinking it was about six months ago we got the first round, but it's a lot of work that's done. I know, I know how that is and to try to deploy money in a wise way. I've just said this about 10 times here lately, you know, there's a difference between wisdom and knowledge, you know, wisdom is the way, is how you, you know, knowledge is just information and wisdom is how you, how you deploy that, that information. So we have a lot of wise people in the way we do that, having a low debt and there are so many communities that don't have that and we know that debt is a burden and it gives us the margin to weather potential recession storms and things like that that are, that are at bay, seems like always on us. Veterans Day, thank you for your service. Not sure why you want to come and sit as city council, just getting out of service, but I know you're just here as representative and people already say thank you and you're just kind of like, you know, I just was doing something you felt called to do, but the men and women that served with you, you know, putting yourself in harm's way is a real thing and thank you for that, appreciate it. And we won't be here for Veterans Day, but you know, I know there's events, but God bless the veterans that stand tall for, against evil forces in this world that don't like America and what we stand for as a, as a republic. So I got, thank you.
Okay. I've got a couple of things. Matt, you did an excellent job with that, congratulations. I mean, you can't beat that, right? I mean, it's awesome, but I will still say it, congratulations to you, Adam, and your family and the admirable way in which you conducted yourself from beginning to end. Proud to know you, proud to vote for you, proud to be out there. And when people ask questions, proud to introduce you to someone yesterday who might not have been one of your, you know, voters this year, but probably will be turned around on that. You know, those are kind of, those are really cool things and, you know, and congratulations to your family as well. I mean, it, it's been really neat to get to know you and them and watch them be there with you and go through that. And having a large family myself too, I know that's a lot. And so your wife and your children, you know, deserve recognition and all of your family that was there too. So, so yesterday was great, a lot of good wins and, you know, some, some sad losses, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we had enough good wins to kind of help pull us through. And it was my first time to be out helping with the polls for an entire day and it was really amazing to see so many people that were excited about voting, not just, I'm here, you know, but really fired up, ready to get in there. They were energetic, lines were long, people were even saying, gosh, this is longer than I'm used to, I got to go to the bank and come back because I got other things to do, stuff like that. So it was really great to see everyone out doing that. So let's see here, budget's been mentioned and I also want to thank Scott and Dan and staff because, you know, you guys make our job easy. We got it, for a public who doesn't know, we have a, you know, a binder this big to go through and you guys break it down for us. And one of the things that I appreciate seeing, especially as a new member, is how much forward thinking there is, forward thinking, forward planning with projects. So when people, so it's not just, okay, let's, let's be reactive, let's handle this problem as it's happening. Really, a lot of that forward thinking, which may not have always been the case, but you guys are doing a great job with that, so thanks for making us look good too. Okay, a couple more things here, let's see here. Catcha Fire Open House, yes, it was great, a lot of fun. My kids really enjoyed it, and they got to have their faces painted and all of that. And it's just, I love seeing the new businesses come in and just the pride that they have in being here, and they're just a really great representation of our city. Okay, this past week, I also had the opportunity to do a ride along with the police department, and even though I've worked with, you know, a department before for a couple of years, learned a lot, it was very nice to see, spent some time talking with the chief as well. And then I went over to the fire department, spent the day over there, went on a couple of calls, had dinner with the guys, I mean, it was just very gracious of them to, you know, have dinner with us, you know, and really got to hear from all of them about, you know, things that are great here and how things operate and just some ideas. And it's, we have really good staff, you know, from every level, and the fact, they have ideas on, on things that can, you know, improve how we service our, our city and how they take care of them, and, you know, these are all a bunch of individuals who, you know, have risky jobs. And so it's a very honorable job, and I really enjoyed my time with them and have a mindful of ideas and things. So thank you to both the fire chief and police chief and all the staff that talked with me and took me along on those days, so that's it.
Adam, congratulations on your, your win. I remember sitting in the old land with you, talking this over and kind of brainstorming the, the ideas and scheduling your first event. And you have worked absolutely tirelessly for this, and at the same time, have been involved in literally everything. So you are, you're an inspiration to me, and I think everybody else on this board with, with the amount of effort and the amount of work you put into, to everything that you do. So I see you taking that to Columbus and, and working even harder up there for our community. So I really, I appreciate your hard work, and I appreciate that win, and I look forward to working with you in the state house. As far as the, the budget goes, this is the largest budget we've ever had in our city. I agree, I appreciate the forward thinking of staff. Us looking into electric generation is something that I think we, we need, and we need to have that with as much turmoil and tribulation as there is globally and even nationally. I think having that stability is important for the community, so I'm looking forward to moving through that as quickly as we can to, to have those resources back in the community again. And then also just the, it's a trickle down. We have, we have great, great city manager, great attorney, and then that trickles down to having really good department heads, and they keep them, keep them focused. And it's just a, from top to bottom, we've got a great staff, and I appreciate the work that you guys put into that. Again, it makes our jobs really easy, and how you are able to condense a 300-page budget down into a couple slides and really let it sink in for people. So being able to manipulate some of those dials to drive it back into capital improvements is, is an important thing, and something we have talked about for years. So being able to do that this year is a big deal, so. Thank you, Dan, for your work that you've done on, with our accounts and being able to, to drive down debt and refinance debt, saving millions of dollars in those aspects. So with that, we have a.
I got one thing, I forgot to congratulate the city, or, yeah, the, well, the school district on passing the levy. That was so critical for the city to maintain those level of services and what people expect in the schools, and I neglected to say that.
And capture new development as well. It was a big deal.
Yeah, the restructuring of being a replacement levy rather than having these renewals is going to be a big deal, so we don't have such constant school levy fatigue, so.
Executive session, sir?
This would be, we would need a motion to adjourn the executive session, pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 12122-G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, specifically the concealed carry lawsuit.
Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes. Thank you for joining us tonight, thank you, Gabe, for being with us, and we will see you next week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next week.
For our final voting meeting of, of November. Have a great night.